You have a quorum?
We do have a quorum although we have one trustee who is present on site but not at the dais. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I apologize for our delayed start. It's 7:20 and we're calling the regular meeting of the Peralta Board of Trustees to order at 7:20 on October 7th, 2014. Welcome to the meeting of the Peralta Community College District Trustees. Can we have a report on the close session items?
There were no action items taken at the close session tonight.
The next item is the approval of the agenda. At this time, board members or the chancellor may request to modify the agenda.
I'd like to move that we approve the agenda. I'd like to pull items 13 and 14.
Item number 13 is consider approval of a one-year contract in the amount of $210,000 with the College and Career Academy Support Network for the provision of the technical assistance to the East Bay Career Pathways Consortium for which the Peralta Community College District is the fiscal agent. That's item number 13. Item 14 is consider approval of a one-year contract in the amount of $330,000 with the Career Ladders Project for the provision of technical assistance to the East Bay Career Pathways Consortium for which the Peralta Community College District is the fiscal agent. Are there any more items or any more modifications to the agenda?
Ms. President, I'd like to pull item number nine. Consider approval of the board meeting calendar for 2015.
So those are items nine, 13, and 14?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to ask that we remove from the agenda entirely the item dealing with the PLA. And I'm trying to find, you know, I'm working on an electronic pad here and I can't quite find the, it's item 25, and I don't know whether, I'd been told that was going to be removed from the agenda and I'd like formally to request that it simply be removed from the agenda and brought back at the next meeting.
What we can do is pull it and then have discussion on.
All right.
So that's item number 25, consider approval.
So there's objection to that. There are colleagues who would like to consider that item.
Right, there's colleagues that would like to discuss that. Trustees that would like to discuss item number 25. So we'll pull it from the consent calendar.
I want to pull 25 and 16.
And 16.
If we're pulling, are we pulling from the calendar?
Yeah, 16 and 25 will come back at another board meeting.
So the chancellor is requesting that item 25 be entirely removed from the agenda, which is what I was asking, but are there trustees who prefer to have that item discussed this evening?
I don't believe there was a vote or anything.
No, I'm just.
What I was, I had heard that there was concern over that item, so what we can do is talk about it when we get to the, after we do the consent calendar, we could then discuss with the action items and the idea of pulling it. Or, the trustees who have an objection.
Just for clarification, so the chancellor requests that we pull 25?
Chancellor requested that we removed item 25 entirely and bring it back at the next meeting.
I'm okay with that.
Then there's no more objection. We're good. So we'll remove item 25 and bring it back at the next board meeting. And item 16.
And item 16, chancellor, you want it to be removed?
Yes, I want it removed.
You want to remove item 16? And then there was one other item I just heard?
18.
18. Remove item. I'm sorry, pull for discussion, item 18. The chancellor has not asked.
You're talking about 18?
Yes.
You're talking, no, I didn't ask to remove that.
No, 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 I wasn't asking for. Okay, so we're going to pull item 18 for discussion. And item 13. So let, what, in order, for the purpose of clarification.
Reason for calling attention to that? Is that removal or just merely pulling?
We have 13 pulled, we have 14 pulled, 16. No, no, I think we may have those incorrectly stated. We, the only thing that's removed is our 16 and 25. The others are moved to the action calendar.
Okay, all right, we need a correction.
So, for clarification, we're pulling from the agenda for the action calendar for discussion, items 18, nine, 13, and 14. We're removing items 16 and 25.
I move that the agenda, absent the items that have been pulled and removed, be approved?
Second. It's been moved in seconds, should approve the agenda? It's been moved in seconds to approve the agenda with the modifications listed. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. The next item is approval of the minutes.
So moved.
It's been moved by trustee Riley.
Second.
Second by trustee Withrow. All in favor?
Aye.
It's been moved in second and approved. The next item is public communication. We have one speaker card.
Matthew Goldstein.
Good evening, I'm Matthew Goldstein, president of the Peralta Federation of Teachers, AFT Local 1603. First, PFT would like to congratulate the three faculty members elected last week to post on the union's executive council. Longtime Laney rep, Mariam Zamora Cantor, a DSPS counselor at the flagship, won the union's secretary position. That's a district-wide slot. Scott Hushida of the BCC English Department climbs aboard as PFT co-chair at the Center Street Campus. And COA computer scientist Cousin Bob Grill, who has filled a variety of roles at PFT over his long and storied career, will take over a co-chair position on the island. PFT thanks everyone who participated in the election and it eagerly awaits the chance to introduce faculty to its new look board. Next, PFT looks forward to resuming contract talks with the district tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. at the PFT offices. The union and district will return to the table in an effort to resolve a number of issues yet outstanding from the successor agreement from last year. Once the 2014-15 deal is settled, PFT and the district will start the next round of comprehensive contract talks that will lead to the next three-year contract. We'll keep you updated on the progress of negotiations in the weeks and months ahead. Finally, PFT wants to let folks know that its grievance in the matter of the Laney Part-Timers Denied Reappointment Rights is ongoing. Its next stop will be here at the district office where PFT hopes the issue can at last be satisfactorily resolved. We'll continue to apprise trustees and the public of the status of the grievance at future board meetings. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Are there, do we have any other speaker cards? So then we'll move on to reports. The board, the next item is the Associated Student Government Reports.
President, okay, oh, good evening. My name is Lizette Aguilera and I am the treasurer for the Associated Students of Berkeley City College. So in the past month, Alameda County has come to Berkeley City College and to register voters and to recruit poll workers for this year's elections. We've had a very successful transfer day headed by faculty member Paul Coyle and student Senator Iman Abdallah. This was an Associated Student Fund Day event and we helped by also through funding and through marketing of the event throughout the campus. Over 50 schools were represented and they assisted students in information for transfer. Also, this month is Hispanic Heritage Month and the Latin American Club took charge of this, also funded by the AS. So far this whole week, we've had a mariachi play, we had a Peruvian pan flute player, and we've had information on, and educational presentations on Hispanic and Latin American culture. The AS also funded the first issue of the BCC Voice, which is a student-led newsletter and class. We also established standing committees, the Documents Committee, which leads in the revisal of all governing documents. And it is, our aim is to create a BCC Student Government Handbook. Also, the Finance Committee and the Marketing Committee. The 40th anniversary of BCC is coming up and that is being led by Rudrani, our VP at BCC. More information on that item coming next week. Thank you.
Good evening. I am a senator for Merritt College, Associated Student. I am here to report that for Latino Heritage Month, we are sponsoring that. We will be giving money for them to purchase food. There were other clubs that came together to donate money to that. We also will be sponsoring, huh, oh, I'm sorry. My name is Tashakamore, Tashakamore. We will also be sponsoring the People's Party Play with the Afram Department, which will be coming in November. And another issue that came up in our meeting is we are working with our facilities to find out about accounts that have not been accounted for for this semester. So there are some fundings that we have not been able to access and now it's presented to the facilities, so we're working in contact with that. I just wanted to make that a discussion or make that clear that Merritt College ASMC is not receiving all its funding and we're working with our facilities to get that handled. So we're planning on getting something in a timely manner, hopefully some balance sheets, but as of now, we are not working with our full budget. That is all.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Do we have any other Associated Student Government Reports? The next item is the chancellor's report.
Thank you very much and good evening, trustees, district staff, college presidents, and the general public. I just want to share briefly, the Oakland, the city of Oakland has a education cabinet that includes myself and the various superintendents and principals around the city. And last week, or actually the week before, had the opportunity to hear the new superintendent of Oakland Unified, Dr. Antoine Wilson, who shared his vision of what he brings to Oakland. And those of you who are familiar with Measure N, that's on the ballot in November, that's pretty much the Oakland Unified School District vision, and that is every student should have college and careers in mind as they go through the school system, which of course fits very neatly with our own initiatives, particularly with the Career Pathways Trust, which last week we had a launching, I think it was last Friday, where up at Merritt College we had representatives from at least a dozen school districts, half a dozen colleges, and we also were graced with the presence of Senator Darrell Steinberg, who was one of the authors of that bill and secured the funding for the Career Pathway Trust, $15 million, which was awarded to the regional area of 880 corridor, as we call it. And we're looking forward to implementing that grant for the next several years. I want to also acknowledge that Laney College had a special visit this morning with a delegation from Singapore. I don't know if you wanted to talk about that at all, Dr. Webb, I'll give you all an opportunity. But I do want to also ask Dr. Graeme Berg to mention some of the agreements that are being planned for College of Alameda. So will you take a moment?
Thank you, chancellor. Members of the board, it's good to see you this evening, fellow presidents, colleagues, friends of the Peralta Community College District. I'm happy to report that we are, have just signed an MOU with Bay Ship and Yacht, which is a large corporation in Alameda and it does a lot of work in terms of maritime, commercial, and large watercraft. And they came to us about a year ago based upon a conversation that I had with the mayor of Alameda. And I asked her, are there any of the industries locally that I should meet with that may have a need for technical education and training? And she mentioned Bay Ship and Yacht. So here we are, a little, little more than a year ago, really starting on that path, we've signed an agreement with them. And that agreement calls for the training of some of their employees and some of our prospective students who might be interested in that particular career. It's going to allow us to provide them the kind of education, training, and certificated programs for the changing and needs of the maritime industry. The federal government has some increasing requirements in terms of what it's requiring from local corporations for specifications. And the industry, like all industries, are changing rapidly and they want to be competitive. So they approached us in terms of a partnership, that we begin to expand our automotive and our transportation programs to issue certificates based upon a joint planning in terms of a curriculum. So we're excited about it because it provides us not only an opportunity to respond to local needs, it also provides an opportunity for some of our students to enter into that transportation logistic field that we've been talking about and to some other career paths. Really, it helps develop their local talent, too. When many of our students begin to consider this kind of a career, they will also be tied to possible employment with Bay Ship and Yacht, so I think it's a complete package. That work is being done right now. Some of the milestones that we have for ourselves are to make sure that we have the curriculum all finished, tightened up by the spring of 2015. Clearly, it's got to go through all of our curriculum committee, but I really want to thank the vice president for instruction, Mr. Karas, and the dean for workforce development, Dr. Perlis, who were really instrumental in bringing all of this together. A lot of hard work, they visited some other institutions and got really a good model. We expect our first cohort in the fall of 2015 and should be a pretty healthy group, anywhere from 15 to 20 students. And I'm being a little conservative, but I think that it's going to grow and have great opportunities, not only for our students but for the region and for major corporation that we're supporting. Okay. Chancellor, I'd like to forego the other MOU. We're still tightening up some of the details on that one.
That's fine, thank you very much. And that concludes my reports for this evening.
College reports? Do we have any reports from the colleges? Vice chancellor reports? Then we move on to board of trustee reports. Trustee Riley.
Chairman Chair, I just wanted to thank Herb Kitchen. On our meeting of September the 9th, he spoke for Peralta Association of African American Affairs, read a lot of letter that was distributed to trustees and the chancellor regarding Paul's concerns and disappointments over the change in decisions related to the programs to be funded by Peralta Accountability for Student Success. The acronym is PAS. And I just wanted to know, had we responded to that letter to Paul? Because I, and this has been over a month ago, so I just, I'm just raising that question. We have, because there, okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Riley. Trustee Oliver?
I guess I have to report that I've recently spoken with Jennifer Seabird, relation, Human Relations and Benefits Department here at the district. She wants to collaborate with the student governments to do a Peralta Fund Day with the Golden State Warriors. Yeah, that would sound pretty fun. And I only, I think we should only agree to it if, before the game, the chancellor gets to make a bucket before the game. That'd be pretty cool. It'd be like, you know, you know, the college is represented and, yeah, you can have a lot of students there and support cheering them on. Also, there's been a lot of talks with the treatment of student workers in the, in the district. I won't bring up any particular case, but maybe I shouldn't, we should encourage the district and board to create more, you know, a policy, a real clear and, real clear policy and AP for student workers so they know it's clear for what they're allowed to do. There's a lot of, a lot of students feeling taken advantage of, a lot of students that are economically disadvantaged and international students who can't work outside of, of the district or colleges. So they feel taken advantage of at times because this is the only place that they can work and, you know, they're maybe overworked or not paid well or things like that. So maybe the district can take this on, make a more clear policy around that. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Oliver. Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Thank you. I just want to take the opportunity to remind the public that on Friday, the 17th of October, Berkeley City College will be celebrating its 40th anniversary. There's going to be a press conference on the prior Tuesday with mayor and president of the college, talking about partnerships between the city and Berkeley City College. I hope people will be able to come to the fundraising event. It should be exciting and memorable. It's been, it's been a pretty incredible path that the district has been in over 50 years and 40 of those years with Berkeley City College. So something, a lot to celebrate and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez. Trustee Galasa?
I'll pass this evening, thank you.
Trustee Withrow? Trustee Handy and I attended the Congressional Black Caucus this last, the week before last. One of the notable engagements that we had was an opportunity to speak with the members in the, the staff of the members in the House and the Senate regarding the authorization, reauthorization of the Higher Education Act, which has a significant impact on Peralta because the Title III monies that support low-income students come through that, the authorization of that act. And we are in a, the type of struggle that happens in Washington where you're asking for more money for education to support students that are most in need and you're also working on how to get the flexibility necessary to support the programs that our college presidents are spearheading and that our chancellor is spearheading. And we visited with the, also with the accreditation office there in the, at the Department of Education. I would say that we had, we're developing a relationship with Dr. Fox, who is the, may likely be the chair of the Congressional Office on Education. And we've talked to her staff on a few occasions. We make a point of getting to know them and letting them know what's going on at Peralta and what the community college world looks like, not just from the, the agencies that we have and the lobbyists that we have, but also we want to try and represent our chancellor and our college presidents to the, and our students and our faculty and all of those who make up the Peralta community, our, our staff. And so we were starting to make some headway, I think, in Congress. We did have an opportunity to talk with the staff of Lamar Alexander's office, who's extremely conservative and debated with us, actually. We got a chance to really roll up our sleeves and get into a very, get into the weeds about some of these issues. So we're going to keep trying and we're going to keep working on this and we really appreciate our college presidents and our staff and our faculty and our chancellor and those of you who we're representing, we want to do a good job for you and we're willing to walk into just about anybody's office and try and do that job.
As you said, it was a very rigorous schedule, starting with a briefing with our analyst and then a review of the appointments that were set up. And this comes from feedback from our general counsel, our chancellor, and our lobbyists as to the issues that are most pertinent to Peralta. And then we're off to the hill to meet with the individual groups and we have a short period of time. Mostly you're speaking with the aides, but the aides are the ones who are giving the information to the congressperson or the senator that the decisions are being made that are, that will eventually make the decisions. The thing that impressed me the most is, especially when we were in Senator Alexander's office, is that sometimes the guy, the staffers are, you know, very kind of arrogant or whatever and dismissive and they didn't know who they were dealing with. And, and at first I was going, wow, it feels a little hostile in here and I'm looking at the wrong, I'm looking at the agenda but I'm looking at the wrong number. And then I looked at it again and I says, oh my God, this is where we are now, I fully understand. But when, with the play going back and forth, back and forth, there was a period of time where there was a break and they were like, oh my goodness, well, this kind of makes sense. And the conversation shifted to, how do you think these issues should be? No, we're not asking for money to be given without allocations. We're asking that we can have more freedom to use the money in specific areas such as foster care and other areas that are needs to our particular types of communities. We were briefed and were able to talk to them about how some of our districts are very similar to their districts and who are, what our populations are. And Senator, I mean Congresswoman Fox's office, she went to the community college, her staff went to do community college, and they have a very good understanding. But when you get to the senator's office, it's a very different story. But we left that room with them asking for a write-up of some of the ideas that Meredith had proposed to them. She was not going to let them off the hook. But they, it ended up walking in with them being a little bit, you know, here we have to talk to these urban city bumpkins again, to actually an air of respect. And one of the things that I found to be very striking, because sometimes you're asking yourself, why am I here? What can I contribute? What can I do? But the lobbyist said to us, they get sick of looking at the lobbyists. They said, we're there all the time. It's you that they really listen to, that they really want to hear from. So I think that the trip was really worthwhile. We learned a lot. And especially, they told us that there was one person that they had not met and that was Mr. Herman Bounds, who was with the accreditation group. But when we walked in there and he said hello and then, he was from North Carolina? South Carolina?
He was from Oklahoma, southwest.
Oklahoma. And, and our trustee from Texas. From that point on, it was a grand welcome. But the information that we gathered from, from the two gentlemen that we spoke to that we are able to bring back to our campuses and hopefully by now you've each received an email where you can download the document, that was one we never heard of. And we'll make things very, very clear in terms of what their expectations are and what their expectation is of the accreditation, accrediting group and what their expectations are you, what you can and cannot do. It was just enlightening and they were so, they were so willing to give us information and tips and things that we could bring back that were very valuable to our, to our community. So I have to say that it was a very, very worthwhile meeting and I believe trustee Withrow and trustee Brown will be going back again in, in a few weeks.
For an advocacy conference and we're going to go back and keep knocking on those doors?
We keep knocking on those doors because the first time we went to the, the triad meeting, they scared us. I mean, we, we had a whole new respect for Elizabeth Warren because she was up there battling on her own and they were telling, saying that, you know, these colleges like Dartmouth are innovative and they have programs during the summer and people are listening to this and they're believing this. And we're saying, innovative, they charge $10,000 mandatory for those programs. We have programs through the summer, but we have to close on Fridays to lower our electric bills. You know, we've been innovative all along. So you have to just keep, this is what we're dealing with and we have to just keep knocking on those doors. And it's also wonderful when we have the students with us in the past, too, to, to also give their perspective. And the other thing is meeting with Congresswoman Barbara Lee for the constituents breakfast. She is so over the moon with being, with the building, the Allied Services Building being named after her and, and she is so excited about trying to help us to find funding for things that we need. When you are at the Congressional Black Caucus and you meet other communities, you have no idea what a great thing you have here in the Bay Area. no idea what a great thing you have here in the Bay Area. Because people in other states, they don't know their congressperson personally. Their congressperson doesn't come to their campuses and doesn't get involved with community things. So we are really blessed here and it was exciting to hear her talking to her group about our colleges, colleges and the plans that she has for our future. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the District Academic Senate Report.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And good evening to the rest of the trustees, chancellor, district administration center staff, college presidents, colleagues and members of the public. Recently in conversation with a colleague in another discipline, we were discussing issues pertaining to student success and preparation. Specifically, our students' ability to communicate effectively in writing and by implication, their ability to comprehend college-level textbook materials. The gist of the dialogue was, many of the students we have in our classes are neither knowledgeable nor practiced in their use of standard English. In our view, this significant weakness is a major deterrent to both their academic success and success in their chosen career paths. However, given sufficient will and attention, there are several ways to address and correct this weakness. As it happens, shortly thereafter, I read an article in the September 10 issue of Education Week that focused on both spoken and written communication in the context of recent research that shows the effectiveness of a particular language program for improving students' use of standard English. For many decades, quoting from the article, "Language experts have argued that low-income students who learn to switch from speaking a dialect to using standard English have an easier time moving up academically and socially." Now, researchers at the University of Michigan are scaling up a language program intended to help students embrace," emphasis added," their home dialect instead of eliminating it while also recognizing when and how to switch to standard American English in academic and professional settings. More than two dozen dialects of English are spoken in the United States, crossing race, class and geographic regions, and many of those dialects are reflected in our student population. Interestingly enough, the article references the national debate that was touched off in 1997 when the Oakland Unified School District Board ruled that the dialect known as African-American Vernacular English, also called Ebonics, was linguistically different, distinct, and urged teachers to help students who use this dialect to understand how it differed from, quote, mainstream English, end quote. Although the public response to this ruling was somewhat inflamed, the University of Michigan research findings that are cited in the article provide evidence that the OUSD School Board got it right. Called code-switching and style-shifting, students are learning to toggle between two dialects in the research findings that were referenced in the article that have shown them to be successful using a software program called ToggleTalk. As you may know, this year Laney College is assessing our institutional learning outcome on communication. ILO number one states, "Students will effectively express and exchange ideas through various modes of communication." To cover all of the probable modes, Laney's learning assessment coordinators have developed four different rubrics with which to assess writing assignments, oral presentations, media stories and performing or visual arts. Several faculty members have expressed the desire that the past proposals, Peralta Accountability for Student Success Proposals, focus on some of the needs to improve our student skills as a priority instead of primarily giving us new projects that will be helpful, no doubt, but that certainly do not address the underlying needs. Unfortunately, while I would like to give you more details about this, right now I've ran out of time to prepare my report comments, so I'll have to finish them at another time and thank you for your attention. I look forward to the opportunity to say more.
Through the chancellor, may I ask a question about the student learning outcomes?
What was your question?
Oh, my, my question is with respect to the ToggleTalk is, and the, uh, the dialects of English that are, that are prevalent in, in, um, the United States. I'm wondering how, how, have we employed any of that or do we, is there, is there a measurement that we have at Peralta that, that with such a diverse population, how that can be used to help the students in their, um, their mastery of their, the subject matter that they're studying?
Well, certainly the Academic Senate can best answer that.
Uh, Madam Vice President, I am not aware of any program at Peralta that addresses this head-on and I'm not sure that many faculty members even are aware of the research. It is fairly recent. And the University of Michigan is in the process of scaling up the research findings from the small study that it conducted to 10 districts in its area.
Thank you. We have presentations, two presentations. The first is a legislative update from the McCollum Group.
So let me, uh, introduce, um, Patrick McCollum and Mark McDonald, the two Scots. I think I, no, one's a Scot, one's an Irishman or vice versa. Trying to succeed from the union. So Patrick and, and Mark represent the McCollum Group, who have been broader lobbyists for, I believe, what, a good 10 years, if not more. And, um, Patrick and Mark gave the cabinet a briefing this morning. And, uh, I think, are we doing a pub, a PowerPoint this, this evening? Mark, are we doing PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chancellor, Madam President, members of the board, presidents, uh, faculty and staff and students from the audience. Um, now sometimes, about every seven or eight years, you get to come up and just talk about good news. Uh, and you just think about it, two years ago, here we were in the fifth year of bad budget. We turned away 500,000 students from the California Committee of Colleges. We'd, we were down about 18% in budget funding. Our class size has gone up. We're getting more accountability that's kind of coming on to us, creating much tension in the districts, not only in Peralta, in the districts. At the same time, these students wanting to come to be trained. Today, we talk about an amazing year, uh, that we've had where we're storing access, substantial access. We, you, this district was involved with the chancellor's major help, uh, directing a budget that's totally completely different, how we allocate budgets, that's much more sensitive, uh, sensitive to urban students. It provides that scheduled maintenance and structured equipment and, uh, flexibility that saves money in some of the matches, that doesn't end up adding much more reforms to you within it, uh, and some major legislative legislation. So, um, sometimes it's just good to kind of step back and look how fast things change in the state. Yeah, you know, it's Prop 30, other things that went in as well. And, uh, so what I want to do today is just a little bit talk about process. We'll get into the budget, um, uh, which I will do. Uh, Mark's gonna talk about the legislative, uh, items, a couple of the major items that we can talk about. You, I know you have some questions around the baccalaureate and other areas. Then we've identified some issues in 2015. But what we're doing right now on our roadshow is we're collecting information from you. We want to hear from you. Uh, this morning, we met with your cabinet, with the chancellor of the cabinet, who gave us some ideas and suggestions and that's going to create our 2015 agenda. As this budget that I'm about to tell you was created a year ago, much in meetings with this and our 2014 agenda. So the kind of the process we do is that we start this year kind of going in and meeting with our clients, which are mostly the large urban districts. And then what goes on, so you just know, is that every Monday, Mark runs a call, uh, and, uh, vice chancellor or legal counsel, Gwen, is on that call. And what he does is he puts about five issues, they could be regulatory issues, it could be budget issues, legislative issues, and it's the one place where the chancellor's office, the league, members of the staff, department of finance, every week can find out, how does it impact the community colleges? And I just want to compliment, compliment Tui. She's played in a major role in providing excellent analysis. Uh, much of what we do is very analytical and it's probably the most analytical place providing information, but both the legislature, the chancellor's office, the governor's office, STIRS, financial aid. On Thursday, Chancellor Ortiz, uh, leads a call with Thursday with other urban chancellors. Chancellor Harris gets on the call at time, Scott Lay will get on the time, and that's where we talk about strategy. So with that is what we did, is we came up with, um, enter, all right. So we came up last year, uh, with our strategy and, and the, and the really major emphasis we wanted to do was focus on poverty students and create factors within it and, and restore access. So as I think you're pretty, uh, well-known is we had a ve- major restoration of access. Um, we talked about a new fund that would be around student equity. This was a, a, a big priority from us in our meetings with the governor's office. This came from, uh, Chancellor Ortiz and other chancellors to the governor's office. This is a budget item, this $70 million directly around equity that came from our early meetings with the governor's office. We, of course, were heavily involved over the years around the student success initiative and the categorical. We were able to get another 100 million into that and try to provide some flexibility for the creative work that the Academic Senate and your vice chancellors and presidents can work on. And then, um, you had so many regulations and matches. We're successful at decreasing those regulations and decreasing those matches, putting more money and flexibility that you could have in your budget. We have about 150 million for structural equipment and scheduled maintenance. There were some other restrictions and mandates and matches around that. We were able to get around, uh, those matches. I'll get back to this item when we get to the STIRS item, but essentially, uh, and maybe let me talk about the STIRS. I think one of the, I would say, concerns that we had was a deal cut by CTA and the governor on the STIRS increase. I know a couple of board members are concerned about that. We didn't agree with that compromise, but, and I want to compliment Mark McDonald. What we did is we came up with a way to try to fund employer increases around STIRS. Uh, the legislature did not want to do it out of a identified source, nor did the governor's office, so we did it through mandates. We actually got a suggestion today from your vice chancellor of finance is, and we've been meeting with the governor's office to identify the employer increases in STIRS and PERS and try to identify that with that fund in the future. Uh, this is big, this is really big. Uh, your CDCP rate is now going to be funded at the credit rate beginning July 2015. Uh, when you do non-credit, you're much more flexible. What you can do is CTE, the basic skills courses. And, uh, and for students, uh, we kept the fees, no increase, and we're able to increase the Cal Grant. Most of these budget items, I think you know, and I want to kind of get through this a little quicker, so you have some time to do it. Um, do I need to go through the STIRS increase stuff? Do you guys understand that this is going to be major increases over the next five or six years? It fully funds?
I don't know.
Okay. Um, so this was the deal, um, cut between the governor and the California Teachers Association. Um, and, uh, let me just put all the slides in here. You know, the bottom line is you rapidly go up to an employer rate to 19.1%. So from 8.25% last year to 19.1% of, of, uh, STIRS salaries. So very big increase, that's about $250 million employer rate increase by tw- uh, by 2021. And that's why trying to identify a source to fund that is critical and, uh, so far the source we've put in is a mandate source. I think a key thing to talk about this innovation fund is that we were able to do two things. One, we were able to put some ability, if you apply for the innovation fund and you're gonna do a baccalaureate degree, uh, that you're able to use part of that 50 million to fund your pre-cost and some of your costs around the baccalaureate program. And, um, something that, again, uh, vice chancellor Gwen was very critical on is that we were able to get what's called a two, I think it was in here, the two plus two plus three, so for students that want to get into law school. Uh, Prop 39, uh, again, the big victory here was it was really going to be all these accountability audits and grants. It comes to you, it funds pre-recognized projects in the chancellor's office. Career pathways, you've got your first 15 million on that, um, and hopefully, and there is the two plus two, I'm sorry, the career pathway money was the two plus two plus three money. Uh, I'm gonna talk about adult education because I think this is the big issue. It's follow the money, there's 500 million going to be on the table in the budget. I'll talk about this when we get into the future issues. So we initially had all your deferrals bought down. There was some rearrangement of the budget. We think we negotiated an agreement that we're fairly confident Prop 98 is going to go up enough that when the governor does his may revise, will be paid all the deferral, the rest of the 90 million of the deferral down. So we talked about apportionment, student success. These are some of the items, again, that, uh, we tried to work on professional development. There was an item pushed by faculty, which the chancellor supported to try to get some more money for higher and full-time faculty. Now, um, I wanted to step back on this. Again, we kind of focused on two areas. Uh, when focusing on urban districts, the first was the $70 million equity fund, uh, and the formulas around that and what could be done. And you get more money out of that than your proportion of FTS. The next is the SB 361 model for funding growth is antiquated and we were able to get the governor to propose a budget that was urban supportive. It got a lot of opposition from actually the chancellor's office, the league and other people. There were some efforts to reduce it, but factors that help you, urban factors, ESL, we are, I've stayed into it. And kind of things that a lobbyist does, there was actually a proposal into it that says one of the factors would be how many baccalaureate you had in your district. Well, you have urban people down here and up in the hills, you probably have more people with BAs or higher than any other area in California. So that was going to reduce your funding rate. We were able to get that out of the proposal. Talked about the equity funds, um, and I'm gonna talk about these issues in the 2015. So, um, that's what happened in 2014, a very good year on the budget side with targeted money for flexibility, target money focused on urban students particularly, um, and some flexibility of what you can do. We have not gotten back all that 18%, but it's a good start, uh, towards it. Now let me turn it over to, uh, Mark. He's gonna go over the legislative stuff. I'll talk about 2015 and we can take your questions.
Great. Thank you, everyone, chancellor, um, president of the board, members of the board. Um, it's good to be back again. Um, so I'm just going to go over some of the bills, um, that were introduced this year, some of the major ones, um, to talk about them. This was a year where we had actually two major, major bills that were signed. We also had some priorities that unfortunately didn't make it. But I wanted to start with SB 1400, which was a, your district-specific sponsored bill on streamlining, um, expulsions for students, uh, against whom the district had gotten a restraining order. One of the issues for next year is going to be campus safety. We've seen these tragedies on campuses like Santa Barbara. There's a new focus on, um, sexual assault, what, what is happening around mostly some of the four-year campuses, but it's coming down to the community college as well. And the chair of the Assembly Higher Education Committee has already indicated that these are areas that he wants to focus on next year. Um, this district's been ahead of the curve on those things and has looked at this area a number of times over the last couple of years. But this bill had overwhelming support. It was signed by the governor and a big success for the district. AB 1451, this is the concurrent enrollment bill and this is something that this district has talked about for a number of years. Unfortunately, this was probably the biggest disappointment of the year and a year where we had a number of successes, this was the big disappointment. It was held in the Senate Appropriations Committee by some, there was some concern on the K-12 side of things. We had gone in, we'd met with the chair, we'd met with staff multiple times, um, but the way the Capitol works, sometimes, um, a, a backroom deal can stall things. What we have done is we've What we have done is we've talked to the administration a number of times. We actually, at the end of the session last year, had met with the administration and got them in a place where they were okay with the bill. We're working with them to see if they'll introduce a proposal as a part of their budget in January. Let the governor own it and use his political force to get a little more behind the bill. We've also met with the chancellor's office, the state chancellor's office, and so I think at the least we'll get a bill reintroduced by the state chancellor's office and take another try at this. I know this is a big priority for the district. The other disappointment was on the statewide bond, AB 2235, and this was just basically the governor saying no. The governor was not willing to run as a fiscal conservative at the same time that he's supporting a increased debt regardless as to whether or not it was for schools or not. I know Peralta has, I think you have a project at every campus on the list of projects to be funded once a bond is passed. And for now, those issues aren't going on the ballot in odd numbered years, they're only going in even numbered years. So the next opportunity is going to be in 2016. There are some political complications because that's when Prop 30 will be up as well and there are, there will be a push to renew that. So how that works out politically will yet to be seen. A new bond bill will be introduced next year and we'll be looking to continue to have the major, majority of the share of the higher education portion of that bond bill. Some big successes, SB 850, this is the baccalaureate degree bill. Now, it ultimately ended up being a pilot project, 15 different districts, only 15 colleges. So you can only have one college from your district and one program within that college that participates. And ultimately, it cannot be a degree that's offered by UC or CSU statewide. And the reason for that was basically the nursing, the nursing issue. Both CNA and CSU were opposed to nursing being offered at community colleges. Now, CSU did kind of extend a little bit of an olive branch at the Assembly Higher Education hearing in saying that they would discuss regional issues. So if there's a baccalaureate degree being offered at only, let's say, CSU San Diego, does it really make sense for Peralta to be excluded from being able to offer that degree? Those are the discussions that are going to go on going forward, but until then, each district has an opportunity to put forth one degree to be selected by the chancellor. And they're in the process of putting those guidelines out right now. So this is going to be a quick turnaround on these degrees. The other big win was a bill that we've been championing for a number of years and this is inmate education. And this is something that Jack Scott carried a number of years ago, but has also been championed by your legislators. Sandre Swanson carried it. This year Lonnie Hancock was able to get it over the goal line. But what it does is it changes the funding for classes that you offer in a correctional setting. Prior to this bill being signed, there's a huge disadvantage to offering courses, inmate education courses, because you only got the non-credit rate, the lowest funding rate, and that funding didn't go into your base. So there's no incentive for you to offer those courses. Under this bill, you're funded for credit courses at the credit rate, you're funded for the enhanced non-credit or the CDCP courses, which includes short-term vocational courses at that rate, which as Patrick mentioned earlier, will be the full credit rate starting next year. Additionally, there's a grant program where you can partner with state facilities to pull down money on a one-time basis to offer innovative CTE programs. So this bill really offers, provides an opportunity for two things. Number one, to go in and provide education that's proven to be successful and at the same time, if you're below your funding cap, this is a way for you to go in and use that excess up to your cap to pull in some students. Just two other bills that I wanted to touch on before Patrick gets back up there. There's a handout here and I think it's in your Dropbox, but this is a list, I think there's thousands of bills that are introduced every year that we go through and about 100 or two to 200 deal with community colleges. So we could be here all night talking about those, but this, these are the major bills of interest that went through or did not make it this year. And I would just want to point out too, that this district has had traditional support on is, number one, AB 2000 is Gomez, from Assemblyman Jimmy Gomez, extends AB 540 provisions, so resident tuition, to students that have completed three years, I'm sorry, before they had to complete three years of high school. Now it's the equivalent of three years. So these are students that are graduating early and that they're able now to enjoy the privileges of AB 540. The other one is, I know there's a couple of you that are very interested in foster youth. If you look at SB 1023, this is a new program that would be set up in the chancellor's office to partner with 10 districts to provide enhanced funding for foster youth. One of the issues is this year is that the funds weren't included in the budget, so all you have is the program set up. So the idea is that next year the funds will be included in the budget, the criteria will be laid out for the 10 districts to apply. One of those criteria will be the number of foster youth that you're serving. That's kind of how the priority will be set on that.
Okay. You can tell we're moving, we're trying to move this really fast, so let me just, you know, there are a number of issues next year. Clearly, we want to stop reforms, continue to make sure you get your backfill. So the big reform, I think the biggest change really in policy in higher education is this concurrent and dual enrollment and it all interplays with this adult ed negotiations are going on now and the CDCP rate going up to full credit. So now you have non-credit at the credit rate, the flexibility around non-credit, what you can do with basic skills and CTE. If we're successful and we're doing, going to do everything we can to get concurrent and dual enrollment, you'll be able to create a, you're creating your pathways, your projects. The way the concurrent enrollment will work is the junior in high school, that person will pick a pathway, 17 pathways, some CTE, some advanced placement, maybe remedial. And by the time they get to you, they'll have hopefully the remediation or they're in a program and they're more likely to come to you and less likely to drop out and you're going to get funded for that at the full rate within it. We still have got to get that supported. So the, as you know, in this area Oakland Unified does the adult education and San Francisco, San Francisco City College does the non-credit education. The governor really, I think, and many in the legislature wants a slow transition over time, a bus focusing on CTE, basic skills and ESL. He's going to put out at least 500 million in the budget. He's going to put it through the chancellor, Bryce Harris. It may be going up. And then the money is going to go down these consortiums and the consortiums will try to reach agreements and then it goes out either to high schools or the community colleges within it. So incorporating dual enrollment, career pathways, now that you've got the full funded rate, and then following this money, this money is going to be 500, 600, 700 million in the budget, we're looking at least 11% of that or maybe more depending on the agreements that you go into it. So the consortium negotiations are key. What we're working with in the administration, since there's five school districts and one community college district, is that we have some kind of almost UN veto power so that we get a little bit more leverage on that to reach agreement and, but it's going to put a lot of innovation, a lot of opportunity and it's where the money is, the big money is going to be in the budget. And I think you can see, CTE will become a bigger issue, lots of discussions whether we differentially fund growth. Mark talked about campus safety. So that's sort of, and we will be pushing big on the ed bond. So the idea would be the, probably the ed bond on the June 2016 budget and the Prop 30 initiative, which you have better voters on the November 2016 initiative. So with that, we'd love to hear your ideas, suggestions, thoughts.
Actually, I have a question.
Yes.
Regarding the SB 1023 and the districts that receiving the funding being based on how many foster youth you already serve, we have a large population of foster youth in this area, but we only have one college that can get the housing for the students that has the system set in place. So the number of students that we're serving is not the number of students that we need to serve. So if you have a high population, but you're not, you don't, you don't quite have the systems in place, because that's what we've been struggling with, that's part of the flexibility of the Title III funds actually, that we were looking at in our discussions with the Higher Education Reauthorization Act. Is there a way for the number of students in your area to be considered? Because we would be serving them if we could duplicate what we were doing at Lady College. We'd be serving them at all the colleges.
I think, let me, I'll have to go back and look at the specific wording of the legislation, but if I recall correctly, the number of students was just one factor. And the chancellor's office is going to be developing the guidelines. So I think there's an opportunity to meet with the chancellor's office and talk to them about that.
Okay, that would be really important because we have a high number of youth that are foster youth in our region and the number that we're serving is by no means the number that have the need.
Okay. So some sort of participation type factor.
I have a question on the bachelor program. The fact that nursing was excluded, it was my understanding and my sense that it was the nurses that pushed this through.
No, the nurses, well, no, the nurse, yeah, they're the ones that got nursing out. You don't understand why?
No, I don't. No, no, but the ones within the community college program that we interfaced with were nurses that were pushing for.
Oh, yeah, they were, yeah, our nurses were.
It was the nursing program instructors that were pushing for it. It was the California Nurses Association that opposed those provisions.
Yeah. I know, it's hard to understand sometimes.
And CSU was opposed as well, both of them.
So it was the professional organizations that, so that's market share, right?
Yeah.
Market share thing, okay, just another very quick one.
Well, it's the baccalaureate versus the RN issue, that was really what was driving it, but.
Concurrent dual enrollment, CTA opposition, what was in the language that made them unhappy?
I think the last comment might be reflecting of that. You know, this community college faculty getting into high school campuses and some concern around, and we thought we'd put all the language in it to make sure there wasn't any opportunity for us to take over classes that would be taught by high school teachers within it. I think there was some dipping into it, some concerns about funding competition, which is, as we will see in the adult ed debate. This one was really a shock and a surprise. We, I mean, we really, and Mark on this one too, we put 1,000 hours on this. There was not one no vote. We got it through the assembly, got it through the Senate Ed Committee, which is the hardest committee. We had just negotiated a deal with the governor's office and, you know, and we'd met with the Senator De Leon three times and staff. We were more worried, so it's just kind of one of those things that happened, but we're committed, we're going to do everything and we're already doing, I'm going to meet with Ricardo Lara, who's going to be the appropriation chair to get this thing through.
Got one more question. The $30 million for the innovative programs, we've got this great Allied Health building that's going up and we have this great state-of-the-art lab and two of our colleges have fantastic facilities. Is it possible, where is the point that, that funding through this innovative, this $30 million for innovative programs, what's the qualification or the criteria that, where we could benefit?
It's 50 million. It's for UC, CSU and community colleges to increase baccalaureate degrees in whatever way possible. So if there's articulation for Allied Health, two plus two programs, you could certainly use it in that. If you wanted to, it's, if you find an allied, if you decide to do a baccalaureate program in Allied Health that's not nursing and stuff like that, that CSU isn't doing it, you could use it for that area. Articulation between, if there's some courses that are not articulating between the fact, you know, the sentence that you need to do, you could use it in that area. But you're going to be better off if you were with, if you apply with Cal State Hayward and Berkeley probably, you know, and the institutions, though you probably could do separate with your baccalaureate.
Well, it's interesting, the innovation awards are actually not grants. So they need to fund things, they're awards for things that you're already doing. So it's, they're real, they're kind of funny. It's different than most things we've had. The pathway grant is for what you're going to do down the road. If you get the money, you're going to do this. The innovation awards are more along the lines of this is what we're doing, we're getting awarded for it here and so you can put that money to build that up or something else.
So for instance, if the College of Alameda's, their new program that they're starting with bay ship and yacht where they're doing marine technology, if that, that's the sort of thing? Or if our, at Merritt College, we were doing something that with radiology or with some of the introductory level health tech with those two plus two programs?
Exactly, innovative programs that are, yeah, exactly.
But towards the baccalaureate or articulation.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I was trying to look through here to see was there any money for maintenance. We have, we have these programs, we have things that are coming online and one of our issues over the years has been the funds from the state to help maintain this.
Yeah, there's $148 million in the budget for structural equipment and scheduled maintenance. You get a block grant and you decide as a district and stuff, how much you want to do between scheduled maintenance and structural equipment and.
Is that one time? Is that one time? That's a one time?
It is one time. So with this governor, he underestimates Prop 98 and it creates what's called a settle-up. I know people have been around long enough, so there's, that's what the one-time money is. So he way underestimated in the current year Prop 98. We think there's probably going to be 150 to 200 million in the proposed budget one time. It'll probably go in the same way towards scheduled maintenance and structural equipment. What we heard today from your vice chancellor is that we had a push to get some amount of money, of ongoing money into scheduled maintenance so that you have a categorical program that's ongoing versus depending on one-time money.
Yeah, but I think because it's critical, if we can't maintain our facilities, you know, we're in trouble. So thank you very much.
And the one-time money that Peralta received from that amount is 1.37 million roughly and about 1.9 of it, 900,000 of it is going to the actual maintenance.
Trustee Galasa?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, first of all, thank you very much for the presentation. I was, I'm very pleased to hear of the level of interaction with members from our own district and how responsive you've been to Chancellor Wynn's proposals in the past. And for example, the specialty to two plus two plus three. Definitely, and the, well, I'm thanking you directly and indirectly to we. And, you know, your hard work on the concurrent enrollment dilemma. The only question I have right at the moment, again, I think the presentation was clear and the focus on the bills was, I think, very crisp, is looking ahead, I hear it from my colleague here, Withrow, what's, what's the future like in the next five, eight years? Prop 30, sunsets, et cetera? Where, any wild predictions at this point or is that just prediction?
Well, you know, the early polling, I mean, it's going to depend on 2016 and redoing Prop 30. If it doesn't pass, then we're going to look at a big dip. You know, the economy is, you know, the economy is up and down. There is a reserve fund, you know, that's being on the ballot now. Some people are opposing it so you could spend it, but it's going to set aside money for Prop 98 so that, you know, it'll smooth out some of those cuts in future years. But, you know, it's predicting the passage of Prop 30 in November of 2016. Prop 30 in November of 2016. You know, it's a presidential election, it's your best turnout. You know, the, you know, I think there's going to be a little bit more conservative vote now. So I'm optimistic that the voters will see the successes that Peralta's doing, the kinds of innovations that are doing. This governor's been politically smart and being very conservative fiscally and stuff like that. So I'm bullish that it'll continue. And we'll look at, you know, big innovations, I think particularly this high school, community college partnership, much more in CTE coming in, maybe more funding to get at those differential rates when it costs so much more on CTE. And, you know, you know, just continue to rebuild. So I, I'm optimistic. But, you know.
Thank you.
But from a fiscal standpoint, if you're the vice chancellor of finance, you need to know, you've got a A, B, and C option. And C is the worst case, Prop 30 doesn't continue, your STIRS increases go up, probably, you know, then you're looking, and the economy kind of goes up a little bit, but there's no way it withstands those decreases. So you're going to have to kind of have this high, medium, low kind of strategies within it. But we'll know by 2016.
Trustee Oliver.
Hi. I was wondering, is it, is it possible for, to advocate for a bill for the tax on oil extraction from California? I know there, there were talks a few years ago around this. I don't think it, I think it failed, but I'm not too informed on it, but I was told that, that the oil extracted from California does not get taxed. None of the money goes towards California. Is that a possible bill to advocate for?
Yes, it's, it's been introduced for the last four years, it'll be reintroduced next year. We do not, we're one of the few states that does not have an oil severance tax. The money is being targeted to higher education, including community colleges. It takes a two-thirds vote. We've never been able to get the, you know, you would have to have not only 54 assembly members that are Democrats and 27 Democrats in the Senate, but some of those members come from marginal districts. So it's unlikely that we'll be able to pull it. And, you know, you've got major opposition from all the oil companies and the chamber of congresses on it. So it's a good effort, we're going to keep backing it. You know, it took us 10 years to get MAED ed. This one's a little bit tougher stuff, but it'll be tough to get through.
That was Nancy Skinner that was carrying that bill, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Or was it?
There've been a number of different.
Noreen Evans, I think.
A number of different authors.
Yeah, Noreen Evans.
Yeah, Noreen Evans carried it at one point.
Well, thank you very much. That was an excellent report.
Well, we really enjoy working for this district, and we're really pleased to see what's going on here. It makes us really proud to work for you. So thank you.
And you do have very responsive members in the legislature as well.
Yeah.
We very much appreciate the work you're doing.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next presentation is the Machine Technology Program of Distinction presentation.
Let's have Dr. Nora Webb. Please introduce our guest.
Thank you so much, Chancellor Ortiz. And thank you, Board of Trustees, and our colleagues here at the dais, and our colleagues in the audience, as well as our viewing audience. I am honored to introduce us all to one of our longstanding members of the faculty at Laney College, our Chair of Machine Technology Program. I am honored to introduce him because he's one of our innovators, and he's done things that no one asked him to do, but he was anticipating the needs of the community and trying to respond very efficiently. And I am pleased that he didn't wait for guidance, and he didn't stop when he even heard no at different points in time. He's actively engaged in this community, went to churches, went to the Oakland Unified School District, a number of schools and community-based organizations to make certain that what we offer at Laney is not just relevant, but is state-of-the-art. So we went from an old machining model and a program that arguably should have been shut down, and thank goodness we shut it down, but in a way that innovated it. And we looked at market information and determined that the need for manufacturing education was quite high when everyone was saying eliminate it. And our sister college across the way, one of our sister colleges, I'll have to go unnamed, did eliminate machine technology. Now we're a manufacturing education hub in the region, won a few in the States. And this gentleman is a key reason why, in addition to the support that he received from other faculty members, ultimately our dean, who couldn't be here, I think, tonight. Peter Crabtree, want to give him some koodles. And now he's flanked also by Dr. Martin and others, Peter Brown included. I want to mention that, as Chancellor indicated earlier, we had a set of visitors this morning from Singapore. We were very, very honored to have the deputy Prime Minister, who's also Minister for Finance, along with other dignitaries, come here primarily to see our machining operation. They've heard a lot, and they've gone through to a number of institutions around the state of California, and they wanted to see what we offer here. So without further ado, I want to hand it off to Louis Quinlan to talk very briefly about our program. He's got some students here who he may want to introduce as well. Thank you, Louis.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. First of all, thank you, Board members, Chancellor, for a time to talk a little bit about our program. I'd like to introduce some of my students that are here. Most of them decided they'd rather stay in machine, that they had heard me talk plenty, that they, they knew what I was going to say, they've been in it. So first, I'd like to introduce Melissa Cornelius. She's one of our third semester students. In the back is Arthur Godrick, who is also one of our third semester students and been through our industrial maintenance program. And Arthur's also a vet. Andres Alvarez is one of our CPT partners, Career Pathway. He's from San Leandro High, and he's taken classes in our program, and we're going to talk a little bit about what we're doing there. Justin Elbek, his family, he runs a family-owned business that's been in Oakland over 40 years. They do automotive machining primarily.
Which one was that?
Justin.
Justin, okay. Oh, Justin.
And then Tac Tran is one of our industrial maintenance students also. And Tac is one of the first machinist apprenticeships in East Bay in probably 25 years, a new program that we're working on. So I just want to go a little bit over the mission of our program. And it's up there, but, so, we're tied into both the skills of machinists, people taking great pride in what they do. And then the other thing is that we really stress, whoops, let's see, I'm not, this isn't my normal method of teaching, but the thing that I think is, is critical in our program, that we really focus on, the idea that technical literacy, okay? So for today's machinist, the ability to, to work in the, in the computer, in the written word, mathematical area, and then all the technical skills of a machinist. If you don't possess all those, you really don't stand a chance of advancing in the trade, and advancing in a world that is changing increasingly faster and faster and faster. So what we're trying to do with our idea of technical literacy is provide our students with the means to progress through the trade as that technology changes. So our mission is to provide people with opportunities. This young man here, Andre Wallner, that's in the center of the photograph, many of you might want the job he has right now. He's working on board a cruise ship in Venice, Italy, servicing, working on repairing cruise ships that are cruising the Mediterranean. And he's making about $30 an hour doing it. This was from a visit at East Bay Mud, one of our main partners. These are some of our students that are part of our different programs. And so, is there a way to move this thing up in the, so that the rest of the slide is being seen? Ah, okay. So, our program description, we're trying to provide multiple levels of entry into our program. We have students coming in that have no skills at all. Many of them have never even drilled a hole in a piece of wood. It's much different than when I was young, and people worked on their bikes, worked on their cars, worked on anything they could get their hands on. Today's kids are more into video games and other forms of entertainment. And, and it creates problems when you're trying to teach people how to do these things. So we're, we have an up-to-date curriculum, we're constantly writing. And right now, I'm in the process of writing about eight or nine new courses to cover different areas of our program. We prepare people for jobs as machinists, machine tool operators, CNC CAD/CAM programming, industrial maintenance machinists, quality control, and R&amp;D and prototype machinists. Currently, we have AS in machine technology, a certificate of achievement in machine technology, a certificate of achievement in industrial maintenance, and we're working on a certificate of achievement in quality control, an advanced industrial maintenance certificate, and an AS in industrial maintenance. So we have two main focuses in our program. One is the industrial maintenance, the other is the advanced manufacturing, which is the CNC, digital computer world, 3D printers, that type of technology. I'd just like to point out the young woman there at our hydraulics trainer, Jackie Feeny. She is 18 years old right now. She started our program last year when she was 17. She's already graduated from high school. At the end of last summer, she started a paid internship at Shell Refinery. She was making about $22 an hour there as an intern for 12 weeks. They were so impressed with her, they told her, go back to school, finish your certificate, and we're going to hire you back as a trainee at $34 an hour in June. And if she finishes that, she'll bump up to journeyman pay at $44 an hour. So she'll be 20 years old. Currently, she has a two-year-old kid working 30 hours a week and carrying 13 units. So she's working really, really hard, and she's just an example of one of our students. So the question is, how do you create a program like this, create a varied, a variety of on-ramps? So we have people coming from industry that are trying to upgrade our skills. We have students coming in cohorts. We have students coming, very few students coming out of high school, unfortunately. But the other population we're dealing with is people that are chronically unemployed. We're working with some WIA and WIB grants. And so, in the back part of your packets, I'm not going to go into it, there, we show our high-impact pathways, work we've done with Career Ladders program to talk about these on-ramps and off-ramps, so people can come in at different levels, maybe go to work and come back and get more schooling and technical knowledge later on. So the things that we're doing right now, we're working with programs in high school, primarily at schools at Granada High School and Livermore High School, and San Leandro High School, and then San Jose High School, and John Swett up in Crockett, trying to put resources into their machining programs, software, tooling, and some of the X money we have from our grants. Bridge programs, we are a very heavily contextualized program. It's very interesting, because most of our classes, we don't have a single test at the end of the semester. We're strictly a project-based work. But you'll see an example of some of our contextualization. And for us, the way we can do it, the machine shop is a working math lab. For math, us is just as, it's just a tool, okay? And that's the way we explain it to our students. It's like a wrench or a set of calipers, it's just a tool. And when I tell them that the tool they're going to use most in our machine shop is their calculator, they're confused by that at first, but then they understand it, because the amount of calculations you have to do to create a CNC program is overwhelming. So, so how do we do this? For us, recruitment is critical. We start in the spring with the open house at all of our Laney programs. It's funded by some of the different funding we have, and the SB 70 money, the CTE transitions money. And we actually start recruiting for the fall semester in April. All during the summer, we're running different programs. So one of the things I think is critical for, for the board to understand is, our programs are not nine-month programs. We're working year-round, bringing, in the summer, we use it to recruit students that we normally wouldn't have time for or the space for in the, in the normal year. We have special programs that are designed to recruit those people, to introduce them. One of our new programs is Intro to the Skilled Trades, where students spend a week in carpentry, a week in machining, a week in wood tech, and a week in welding. We have one project across all four, so they get to experience a number of different hands-on trades and figure out, what do I want to do? If I don't want to do anything, that's great knowledge for them. That, we count that as a success, because that's something they know they want to do and they can look somewhere else. We do open houses, we do four to five open houses during the summer. We come in for our cohorts, we conduct interviews for those, we do assessment. Every one of our students goes through our own assessment in math and reading before they go in, because it's important, not for just the college to understand where our students are at, but it's, I think it's critical for the teachers that are teaching those students to understand. So we do assessment based on the math they're going to see in their first semester, and readings they're going to have from the textbook in the first semester. And we keep that internal, but we, we need to know as teachers where our students are at. We run a boot camp for our industrial maintenance students also, three days intensive, where they're going through, we have industry speakers come in and introduce them to the trades, and they go on a field trip. The Intro to Manufacturing is a program I talked about, where we're working with the WIA and the WIBs for chronically unemployed youth, 18 to 24. And we earned, we have the Intro to Skilled Trades, we're introducing them to math. They earn an OSHA safety certificate, food handler certificate, they go through college and career readiness, and about a third of these students end up enrolled in our main programs after this preparation. Now, most of these students are coming out of our summer programs, where we're recruiting for the industrial maintenance cohort, our regular program, but their math skills are not usually good enough to, to, to be successful in our program. So we move them into these programs, and about a third, right now, those students actually end up moving into our regular programs. And then we're also working with the WIBs on a placement program out of this one. The on-ramp to the skilled trades is a similar program. The other thing that we're pushing is a contextualized program for our students leaving the CTE. So we have a, we're working with our English and ESL departments, we have a contextualized AS certificate, English 1A class, and contextualized math classes. And again, it's just a tool for. So our students do intense writing and intense planning. This was last year in the English 1A class, this was their final paper. Infrastructure repair is a huge issue for them, both of the jobs they're going to be facing. The pump companies estimate in the, by 2025, that there's going to be $352 billion spent in the pump industry repairing our water systems. So the opportunity is there, our students prepare for it, and this 1A class is helping them to focus on the opportunity that is there. Student support, a priority of our various grant funds has been putting instructional and counseling support in our classes. So far this year, we've budgeted about $85,000 for instructional support in the classroom and counseling support. So this is career counseling outside of the normal, the normal counseling that exists in the college. The other thing is scholarship development. We have private companies that are desperate for people, and right now, they're pouring money into our programs. In the past year, our students earned $80,000 in scholarships to help them with their books, their fees, their tools they're buying, and prepare them to go to work. And this is all coming from outside the college. We have a few scholarships that are internal with the Peralta Foundation, but the vast majority is coming from outside foundations and outside programs supporting our students. Regional work, we are doing regional work with Bay Area Community College Consortium. We're working with Machinist Apprenticeship with both Chabot College, Indiana College, the IAM, and the CTMA through an IDRC grant. And just to give you an idea of how the tone has changed towards manufacturing in California, four years ago, we applied for a grant, actually it wasn't even that long ago, three years ago, and we didn't even rate in the, in the grading high enough to be mentioned. And most of the comments were, you know, why are we doing this, manufacturing is leaving, blah, 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 you know, there, there's no future here. When we applied this grant just a year and a half later, it was a top-ranked grant in the state for the IDRC. So a big part of our program is third-party certification. We worked with the National Institute of Metal Working Skills. Our students go through special classes and earn special certifications. We're one of three accredited community college programs in the entire state of California. We just received that accreditation over the summer. And the NIMS is a, they do, the basis of their certification is not us passing students and not us approving students, but they do certain projects. We take those projects to outside companies, and they inspect that work to their standards, which means it's 100% right or it's no good. Once they pass that part of it, an online test is turned on, and they, if they pass that test, plus the 100% part right, then they receive a NIMS credential in that area. So far, in the past year, our students have earned about 150 NIMS credentials. SolidWorks certification, SolidWorks is a 3D modeling software, the wave of the future. And so far, we've had 85 students earn SolidWorks certification at the associate and a professional level. And in 2012 SolidWorks World Conference, the Laney SolidWorks user group was voted one of the top four SolidWorks user groups in the world. So what are the results? Well, we have full classes running from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And then on Saturdays, this past couple of years, we've had students place in 19 internships lasting 10 in nineteen internships lasting ten to twelve weeks at an average of twenty dollars an hour. And we've placed over fifty students in the last two and a half years, places like Google, Tesla, UC Space Sciences Lab, Lawrence Berkeley Lab, Terminal Manufacturing, FM Industries, East Bay Mud, Union Sanitary District, and Pasco Steel. So to give you an idea of how well our students prepared, last year, East Bay Mud hired a trainee to level position for a number, for the first time in a number of years. Of the nine finalists for that program, of over a hundred and eighty people that tested for the program, six of those nine finalists were from Laney Machine Technology Program. Our challenges, okay? We've put a lot of money from grant resources into student support. How do we institutionalize that support? How do we take the eighty thousand dollars we're spending on instructional aides and counselors, and how do we bring that into the mainstream budget? And, you know, that's a big question for us. The other question that we're having from the high schools is, how do we attract young people from high schools to manufacturing, to high-demand, high-wage jobs? You would think it's a no-brainer, but there is a lot of bias against people that make their living with their minds and their hands at the same time. And so we're trying to deal with that, and Career Pathways Trust Grant is part of that, working with Karen, working with people like Andres. So, those are our issues. There's some more information in your packets about our plans and what we're doing. And thank you very much. I did, there's handouts here, and then also, I thought the board got the entire PowerPoint. Pardon?
Do we circulate that they have?
Okay.
Do we have any extra?
So they just had some additional information on the high-impact pathways.
We'll get it to you.
Thank you very much. That was an excellent report. We're so proud and gratified by the work that you're doing. It's what makes us, you know, keep coming back. It's, that's the purpose, that's the dream, that's, you're a hero. Thank you. And to the students, you're absolutely what we want to help support. It's right on. And thank you, Laney College President, and Chancellor, and everybody that goes into making this successful. And I want you to keep telling us what the challenges are, because the counseling is so important. It has to be institutionalized, in order to bridge that gap that students need. They need that support. So, we're so gratified by that.
Thank you.
Trustee Gonzalez, oh.
Don't go away, please.
We have one question from Trustee Gonzalez. You in?
And I don't know whether my colleagues might have other questions. You know, on our agenda tonight, there was this item sixteen that was pulled, and it was an independent contractor agreement with Danny Beasley, and it dealt with this question, Louis, of...
Oh, it is for me.
Yes, yes, this was a question for you. With something called a FabLab.
Yes.
And, you know, as I read the item, and I read the background material, I didn't understand quite what it was, and it sounds like you're the perfect person to ask. What is this item? What is it that you've got Danny coming in to do? Because I, you know, I looked at the deliverables, and I really couldn't quite figure it out.
So, the idea behind a FabLab is, it's a combination Makerspace and digital fabrication is the basis of it. You're using primarily solid modeling with tools like CNC, let's see, laser cutters, 3D solid modeling, I mean, sorry, 3D printing. And using that, the idea of the Laney model is first to teach our faculty, the number of tools, I mean, there's incredible tools in terms of the digital printing. They're printing cake decorations, they're printing, they're actually printing body parts, bones, and things like that. So, the ability of our people in our science department to take and model the structure of a molecule, or the structure of a body part, and bring that to class and show students how that's created, or how it might work, is tremendous. So the FabLabs actually came out of MIT, there's a huge FabLab down at Stanford, and what it's trying to do is put those engineering tools on a smaller scale in the hands of our students.
So can you now help me understand, help the board understand, how does this fit with the PASS program?
So with the PASS program...
This is coming out of PASS program funding, and I was just trying to get the connection between the PASS program and the FabLab.
So what we're really trying to do is put digital tools in the hands, in the long run, put digital tools in the hands of our students that normally wouldn't have those tools. It's providing access in a much different format than coming into the machine technology area, where you're headed for a specific career pathway. So the digital, in China, they're doing 3D printing of houses, okay? What's that look like? What type of tools do you have to do that? 3D printing is, that's probably the biggest part of it. Right now, General Electric's building a three-hundred-million-dollar plan in Decatur, Alabama, to start printing jet engine parts out of metal, not out of plastic. So, trying to take those digital technologies and teach both our faculty, and put those in the hands of our students. We're working with Castlemont High School, they're running a FabLab, and I think it's a way to put, basically, bridge the, what's happening with engineering and manufacturing is, they're coming closer and closer together. I think that's a big reason that manufacturing is coming back to the United States, is because industry can no longer afford to have manufacturing eight thousand miles and hours and hours away from its engineering part. And so, that is coming back together, especially in places like Lawrence Berkeley Laboratory and Livermore Labs, that all have huge FabLabs. And so, by putting those digital tools in the hands of students, we're both pushing them towards machining careers and engineering careers, because those are the key tools of tomorrow's industry.
So, you know, it sounds like the FabLab is interesting, important. Your program is amazing. I'm still not quite getting the connection between the PASS program goals and the FabLab, but that's all right. I don't need to right now. This is gonna come back in the next meeting, I think, and I'm sure I'll understand it better then. Thank you so much for your work in this program with great students. Fabulous presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
If I may, as President, I'd like to just add a little bit to what our Chair just conveyed. Peralta Accountability for Student Success is just that. It's about ensuring that our students are engaged, they learn, they achieve, and they're successful. And what the FabLab is really all about is ensuring that students want to be engaged, students who would otherwise not really connect to learning. And do it where it's not just within a narrow area of the campus, in machine technology, in wood technology, in carpentry, but actually expose the students who are in sociology, focused on potentially just taking a course and getting by. But all of a sudden, the world is fascinating to them, because they've helped to create a little society, a model for society using fabrication. All of a sudden, sociology comes alive to them, the study of groups of individuals. The same thing with regards to the sciences. So the intent is to go beyond just, use tools that we would narrowly define, focused on machine technology, and expand it even to English and to humanities, so that people are thinking in context. The entire educational process becomes much more relevant. And that's what a fabrication lab could do, in the hands of faculty who are trained on the technology, and then expose students to it, because we've scaled it college-wide.
Are there any other questions?
So I just want to comment that this item on the FabLab is in fact coming back. So I hope all your questions have been answered. We don't have to go through it again next time.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar. Is there a motion to adopt the Consent Calendar?
So moved to adopt the Consent Calendar that has had the INOS pulled and removed.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded by Trustee, moved by Trustee Withrow, seconded by Trustee Riley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? So the motion carries to adopt the Consent Calendar. The next item that we have is the Action Calendar, and we'll start with item eighteen. Item eighteen is consider approval of contract with United Information Consultants LLC to provide an IT assessment in the amount of forty-four thousand dollars. Trustee Handy, did you have a...
Actually, I...
Do we have speakers on this item? Chancellor, is there's a question, is there anyone to, that may be able to help with the answers to, Trustee?
Public speakers.
Do we have a speaker? We don't have a speaker card.
Public speakers.
I have requested that they...
Is it too late?
Is it too late?
I requested, she told me it's too late.
It's my understanding that the card goes in before the item is called.
We'll be able to take the item. The misunderstanding was the public communication versus an actual agenda side of it.
Out the speaker card, just so we could announce your name and have it in the record.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Ayesha Williams, and I used to work here. Not too long ago, I was the first project manager here for Peralta, which is a great investment of Peralta, too, those kind of funds and that type of resource. For this particular item, just had a couple of questions when I read it. I noticed that United Information Consultants LLC, I Googled that. I wasn't able to find a website or any additional information, so I'm a little bit curious what it is, or who it is, and who the resources are on this activity. I do think it's a good activity to do, because I don't know how many funds are spent on PeopleSoft modules that aren't being used. But as you can see in the board item, several modules are not being used. And the other question that I had is that, I do think it's great to do an audit, but it also might be helpful to audit some of the work that's already been done. So, for example, I believe with the financial aid project, there's been over a million dollars of work that's been performed. And that work or data integrates with all of your other PeopleSoft systems. So it might be helpful to also audit that work that was done, to make sure that it was done correctly, and that the systems integrate well. So, I think this is a good effort. There are systems that haven't been implemented, so it's good to audit things that haven't been implemented, but you spent quite a bit of money on items that have been implemented, and it might be helpful to audit those items. So I think this is a good start. It'd be great to have additional information in terms of who exactly is performing the work, have they done other work for Peralta previously, and, you know, maybe they've been paid in some other way. I don't know if there's a maximum for how much a vendor can be paid, you know, a specific person, so without those details. So those are just a few questions that I had. Thank you for your time.
Trustee Handy?
Okay. My reason for pulling this is, falls on some of the same lines. In my Google searches, I come up with a couple of names. So, if this is a new company or a company change, that was something that would have been nice to have been clarified. It took a little bit of digging to get to that. It's a small contract. I've asked, I've made quite a few calls to find out about these practices. What I was asking for, and I was one of the people who were asking, because I get a lot of calls from the community asking about the money that we're spending, how we're spending, what we're getting for our money, vendors. I mean, from the very beginning, when I was elected, the issue of IT and outside consultants were, was something that was very, very important to the employees of Peralta. So, that has not changed. So I was asking for an audit that encompassed the work that we had done, whereas this is looking more at something moving forward. And though, so, from everyone that I've spoken to, they think it's a good idea, but what we have spent, what we have outstanding, what we could do better, and how we can implement best practices was the intention that I had. So this is not really serving the processes that we have. If this was something that, I really think that we need to pull this and have a little bit more discussion about exactly what we're looking at before we make a final determination. I also think that, in light of this being different than what was originally requested, I think that, because it's a larger contract, that it might also be something that needs to go out for an RFP, as opposed to individual bids, because I think that there are small, local, minority, and female contractors here. And one of the issues that the public had with the last vendor that we had coming in, and that we had coming in for the summer, was that we paid something like fifty-nine thousand dollars in expenses for someone to come in for three months, just to guarantee, just in case we had any problems. And then we still had problems, so I kind of call it our fifty-nine-thousand-dollar umbrella, and we still got wet. So I think that looking at small, local, minority, female, having them the opportunity to bid, if we're going to do something like this, I think is something we could do. This is not, we don't have to be so hasty that we have an opportunity to think about this some more and expand the scope. But as, again, this is not what I originally asked for, though it is good. But if we're going to go in this direction, I think there's some specific things to be done. And specifically, I think we need to be adding into that component, the financial aid issue, specifically, because I understand that there's a list now that Financial Aid has put forward, about thirty problems that they're facing with the new system, and we're not sure where we're moving towards that. But I think that these are the types of things. And I think one of the challenges that I've heard from some of the older employees is that when you bring somebody in and you don't ask them, they kind of resent it, and it's a challenge. And we did that when we brought in Campus Works to do the Fit Gap analysis, and that analysis was done without consulting any of the employees. I think that some of the challenges we have is input from our employees regarding our systems. And I think that when you have more outside consultants as opposed to dedicated internal staff, that's a natural thing that happens. But it gives you unnatural results, it gives you failures, it gives you problems. So that if we are going to have an audit of our system, it should be one that certainly encompasses financial aid, the difficulties that we had, and it should definitely include input from the end users, because I think that's where some of the challenges are coming in. And I do believe that with not customizing PeopleSoft, some of the things that we have are gonna continue to be a challenge, and especially after the removal from the mainframe, they're gonna continue to be a challenge. So I think an audit or an assessment is good moving forward, but I think we want to be a little bit more specific about what we're gonna get from it, because otherwise, we're trying to not waste money, and I want to make sure that we get the best bang for our buck. So, those are the concerns that I have, and that encompass some of the concerns of people that have emailed me. And I just think that we might want to pull this and look a little bit more extensively at what we want to be included in an analysis, so that we will, moving forward, we are gonna get the best out of all of this money that we have invested in our system. Thank you.
Trustee Withrow?
I second what Trustee Handy has stated, and what her concerns are. The issue came up, and it's not peculiar to Peralta, it's throughout industry, if you will, and the federal government, state government, whatever, where you've got general managers that are responsible and held accountable for an area where they don't have the skill set. They just don't have the skill set. And it's not clear to me, in general management-type language, that that's what we're getting from this. It, have we, you know, the way we're investing our money in the computer operations, IT, both historically and currently, how we're investing that money, are we doing it to... Are we doing it to, in a reasonable fashion? Are we doing it in a way that we're getting the best return for the monies that we're putting into it? And I think that I would endorse what trustee Handy has stated, that recommend removing this item, bringing it back at a later date, and maybe take an assessment of, is this going to do what we really wanted to do?
Do we have any further discussion on this item?
Is the motion, is it a formal motion that this be pulled?
So can we have a statement of the motion regarding this item?
Can we just do just courtesy, just pull it?
Well, the motion is to remove the item, not pull it, but to remove the item from the agenda and return it at the next board meeting.
And do we have any further discussion?
Just briefly on the discussion. So we want to come back our next board meeting, but is there going to be enough time to do the, to do the study?
So if I may, I would suggest that the concerns that were raised this evening have, in fact, been addressed in my mind with the dialogue I've had with this vendor. But I think that, as you say, may have not been clear on how it was presented. And there may be some additional items that we want to address, which, in my mind, of course, may change the cost. So I think it's appropriate to pull this and then come back with a more detailed item.
So we have a motion on the floor, and we also have the chancellor's suggestion to pull the item. So I think that we can pull it as a courtesy. We don't need to, we could let that motion then be, we could let that motion then be retracted. No need to pursue it. The next item we have then is item number nine on the agenda.
I pulled item number nine after a lot of thought going into it, if you will. In our website and other venues, it states that this board meets on the second and fourth Mondays of each month. That's twenty-four meetings per year. And the proposed calendar that we have before us calls for fifteen meetings for 2015, or just short of forty percent less than what we advertise. And I know I and a lot of the other board members aren't looking for additional work. We don't need it. Time constraints and whatever, but I can't support this kind of a pullback. I can't support it and won't vote for it. And I think that it really reflects in a negative fashion on what we as a board do. We're in a governing role to speak on behalf of the six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand residents of our service area. And it's not only us hearing and sensing it, but it, then the public has an opportunity to hear things and come up to speed. And the thirty-seven thousand students, two thousand faculty and staff that are employed within our institution have an opportunity to hear, sense, and feel things that, quite frankly, right now, we're not covering. Trustee Handy's raised this issue a number of times. In earlier, she stated that she wasn't comfortable not having a meeting in the month of August. I mean, we go from the middle of July to the middle of September, and only the French do that. So I can't go for a fifteen-meeting year. But not only that, on the matrix that we have that's included in the agenda package, on the right-hand side, it talks about and addresses a sprinkling of items and topics that will be addressed at certain meetings throughout the year. And I'd suggest, request, and recommend that the following be covered on a monthly basis. Student success, the indicators that we have on what we're achieving. The funds that are being invested and whether they're being invested, and, you know, the return that we see from that. Faculty evaluations, staff evaluations, manager evaluations. Positions with interim or acting incumbents. Strategic planning goal achievement. And this is, you know, in a general one, but compliance with federal, state, and local laws. I mean, that's kind of important. And accreditation, preparation, and corrective action. I would recommend that we include those on a monthly basis. And if we have two meetings, then you'd have half covered in each of the meetings. Then to be addressed every third month or quarterly. Institutional compliance with student learning outcomes. Corrective action on external audit findings. A report from the internal auditor. Tenured faculty not teaching fifteen hours. Critical material and significant maintenance deficiencies. And we obviously have had a few of those that have, of the critical nature that have come up recently and the fact that we are waiting for funds from the state. Since kind of a chill up my spine in terms of what do we have out there that is putting our students and faculty at risk, whether it be from the standpoint of basic safety or any one of a number of things that you can get into. I don't want to cover that. But anyway, following that, a risk management report. Status on all construction projects. Over the course of time, we should be made aware, and the public should be made aware, and the membership of our institution should be made aware of where we stand on our construction projects. Status of the bond funds. Now, we do have a, you know, we have a citizens oversight committee, but we're, we need to know that, too. We need to know the status of our bond funds. Are we going to have enough funds to complete the projects that we already think we're going to have brought online? Current grants and the status of performance in the pursuit of approved goals within those grants. Then in this case, following that, grants that are being pursued. And are there member, are there things that members of this board can do to assist in the achievement of obtaining the grants? Status of the international program in terms of goals and strategies. Where do we stand? Status of online education and cost of student textbooks. We haven't talked about that in about three years. And just an awful lot of the post-secondary education community are attacking it in a very rigorous and defined and structured manner. And just an awful lot of them are being very successful. And it's not clear to me that where we stand. Maybe we're there, whatever, but I'm not comfortable on it. So I am making a motion then to modify this calendar, to expand the number of meetings in the year 2015, and again, to cover the kind of topics, and they're certainly not considered to be complete. There's obviously a number of additional items that we can put into play. But to include those on a structured basis, so we can see throughout the year. And those that are responsible for areas know that on a certain meeting in a certain month of this next year, they're going to be called upon to make a presentation.
So we have a motion to modify the calendar for the 2015 board year. And we have some specific items that are recommended for addition. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second for discussion.
We have a second for trustee Riley for discussion.
So on the speaker, trustee Withrow, so are we expanding, trying to, we're talking about X number more meetings? Or are we just talking about the subject content?
It's a good question, and I'm sorry I didn't make that clear. It's bifurcated, the two things. One is to increase the number of meetings in the course of the year. Instead of fifteen, we advertise we're going to meet twenty-four times. We're scheduling fifteen. We, in my mind, need to increase that substantially. And the other then is the items that would be covered.
Okay. Look, I can go for that, and I guess staff will come back, because I know there's some, I'm just looking at November the 10th, which is Veterans Day for next year. So it's just some stuff, and then we have certain national meetings that we attend, so that's why some of those meetings were, we tried to work around them to have one meeting, but we could always have them. So I think we just, I'm just suggesting that we consider the national meetings that we attend, the state meetings, and these holidays, so that that's not a conflict when we, you know, when we adjust the schedule. I support adjusting the schedule, but.
Trustee Handy?
Thank you.
Yeah, I actually support both sides. I feel that my commitment that I made was for the two meetings a month. Yes, there are other things that we sometimes do and it takes away from it. But sometimes, the schedule has not reflected our wishes, and it's been reduced and reduced. So sometimes, I believe between July and our return in September, it was actually eight weeks. Yes, we are off for four weeks in August. But not having two meetings, the meeting before and the meeting after, I really have a problem with that, because decisions will be made, decisions have to be made. And I would rather be in on the decision-making process rather than ratifying something that had to be done or done on an emergency basis. So I, at no time have I said I want to lessen the commitment that I made to this district. And I think we all feel that way. I think that we need to look at that schedule, take into consideration our professional meetings that we also have at that time, and try to make sure that we feel that we are fulfilling the commitment that we made to the public when this schedule was being done.
I agree with the importance of making sure that our governance role is complete and that we are employing due diligence and covering the topics that relate directly to the accountability that is incumbent upon us to shoulder as the governing board for the district. I would also like to suggest that there's some other items that we may want to discuss. For instance, the state of the, when the college presidents were able to give us a glimpse of what they're doing and the magnificent work that they're doing at their schools and the programs that they're doing, it allows us to know how to better help and serve the district. And if we could include in the items that we discuss in our 2015 year, a state of the college report from our college presidents, we're trusting you with so much of what our vision is and what our purpose is as a community college district. You're very important to us. In fact, before going to Washington DC the first time, I went to speak to you, because I want to know how to advocate in the best possible way through the chancellor and through the college presidents, because you're our boots on the ground in serving our students. So I would like to make a friendly amendment that we review and discuss, because there may be additional things that we want to add to the list that trustee Withrow has presented. So my friendly amendment would be that we revise the 2015 calendar and bring it back for review and approval after we've had a chance to discuss what we feel is important as from our legislative responsibility as a board. So there's a second from trustee Handy?
Yes, I have a.
Trustee Galasa?
Thank you. I hope that as we put this thing together, we understand that flexibility is extremely important, whether we have twenty-four meetings or eighteen meetings. We need to have flexibility to move meetings, to add meetings, et cetera. So as we make a new calendar, that we look at this in a very clear fashion. In the past, we've never had twenty-four meetings per year. I believe historically, it's generally around twenty meetings a year, which has been, there have been some concerns, people wanting a meeting during the summer, et cetera. But that requires a certain degree of real close examination to make sure we're doing, what I would say, using our time and resources to really help the district in its strategic objectives. Now, as far as the list of the items, a list can go on, and I can add a few things to that list. The question is, how is that list implemented? What is, is the board going to present a structure to management? That this is how, when, and where we want reports to be submitted on these various topics? Or is this something that we will work with as we, you know, we present these as general topics, and then it's something that we do afterwards, or I'm unclear?
The friendly amendment was that we would discuss the calendar and then bring it back for review. So the things that you're bringing up are part of the discussion. Exactly how we're going to make modifications, I think, requires discussion with the board and with the chancellor.
Okay. Well, I will support expanding the meetings and certainly exploring these topics that have been submitted. I also want to make sure that we set very clear priorities of what is most essential for helping the district. And in that sense, rather than just have a carte blanche, A to Z list of things. So we can deal with that in our subsequent review of this calendar.
Yeah, wait, I noticed that everyone seems so excited out there in the audience. Just the idea of more meetings, right, guys? So we have a motion to revisit the calendar. Trustee Oliver?
Yeah, I would just like to say I'm impressed that you guys want more work. And I'd like to, I don't know, this is a way of holding the district accountable. I like the list of items that trustee Withrow brought up. I'd like to add, since we're kind of throwing items out there. I would like to see presentations from shared governance committees, district shared governance committees, what they're working on. I would see maybe towards the end of September and end of November and fall, you know, and end of February and end of April and spring, two reports a semester. And, you know, what the committees are working on and, you know, how faculty, staff, and students are collaborating in these committees.
So then I'll restate the motion. We have a motion to revisit the calendar and bring it back at another meeting. Do we need to state the, chancellor, do you think we need to state the meeting, or will, that we'll bring it back for next?
Yes, but I guess my question is, the, how do we move forward? In other words, do, would the trustee leadership want to create a small group with our board clerk and work through that calendar, or do we have the discussion in open forum?
My suggestion, Mr. President, would be that your staff come back with, you've gotten, I think, a feel for what our discussion at the board level is. And then your staff would come back with recommendations. We can get it before the meeting, and we have some other comments or changes we can make them. That's just my suggestion on that.
So that I hear correctly, that you also want us to consider potential conferences that might be in conflict?
Well, that's built into the schedule already. That's built into the schedule. So I've just said, if there's any other comment, like I'm saying, like on November the 10th next year, that's Veterans Day. That's holiday. It's national holiday. We're not going to have a meeting that day. Like, that's why we changed next month.
Right, right. But we're talking about 2015.
I'm just using that as an example.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
But we don't know all those dates, I don't think, so.
No, they're set.
Actually, some of the dates of those national conferences, NIELO, Congressional Black Caucus, those are set a year in advance. So they're already on, ascertainable. They give us those dates in advance.
Association of Community College Trustees.
And the local community.
We'll do our best.
Thank you.
To address, excuse me, to address trustee Riley's question on November 10th being Veterans Day, it's actually November 11th, just as clarification.
Trustee Oliver?
Is it against procedures or policy that the board actually create the calendar? I mean, they created it. I mean, this is, so you don't want to create the, is it against policy to do that?
The board is making an effort to fulfill the governance responsibilities in a broad overview of policy and making sure we address the items that we're held accountable for without dictating means and methods. And I believe that that was the gravamen of Dr. Riley's suggestion that the staff create the Riley's suggestion that the staff create the calendar so that we're not doing the operations work but are handling the governance work. We want to stay out of the actual performance of the.
I mean, wouldn't scheduling your own meetings be that type of work? No?
Actually, that could be considered means and methods as opposed to governance, but.
Actually, I'd sent a couple of times suggestion to the chancellor that in the past, when our board calendar is made, that it reflects all of the conferences that the trustees usually attend. That way, when we're looking at those dates, we already see that ACCT, CCT, Naleo, whatever are listed. And then when we look at it, then we can say, oh, this would be a conflict. Even today, when I looked at the calendar, I had to go and look for every conference that I attended to look at the dates that are already posted. But the ones that I attended are attended by other trustees. This is the way it was done when I first became a trustee. So that when I got this calendar, I was already notified that this is the time when this conference is taking place and this, or this one. So if we have it done that way, then when the trustees look at it, say, if most of us are going to be at CCLC or whatever, then we're fulfilling our commitment to the community. We're maybe then, and that's the time when we can have one board meeting. I mean, that's coming up. We have two events in November that are coming up as well. But if the calendar is done that way, and because these are trips that we do on a regular basis, I don't see why that can't be part of the calendar.
Should restate the motion then, that the, the motion is to revise the calendar and then bring it back at the next meeting, chancellor?
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
So is there a second for that motion? Seconded by trustee Handy. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed?
Just a clarification on that, and I vote for it. Will, on this, my impression that Linda was talking about like a master calendar, where when, when you, when you see the master calendar, all the dates, et cetera, we can then, well, I'm not sure. Is that what the intent is?
Yeah. What the master calendar should be there so that when we are approving this, when I get this calendar, I have to go and look at every possible conference to make sure that there's no conflict. See if that, that's why.
So the audience can hear. That is why I had to miss the board meeting last, last time. For two months, I said, this meeting is in conflict with the Congressional Black Caucus, the Legislative Caucus. Can we change the dates? For two months. That should not have happened because three, sometimes four trustees, and sometimes college presidents attend that conference. So then we could have adjusted the calendar accordingly early on so that it wasn't a challenge. But as it was, one trustee ended up not going, and she had to leave at 5:00 in the morning for the board meeting. And I left, you know, the night before, I missed the meeting. It was not my choice to miss the meeting. So by having a master calendar, you may or may not be attending that event. But when we, when we accept the calendar, we already know whether it conflicts with any other responsibilities that we may have.
Thank you. I certainly support that.
So the motion carries? And the next item, trustee Oliver?
It looks like the board policy and administrator's procedure 2310 needs to be revised. It does say that, it does say in administrator procedure that the board meeting should be the second and fourth Tuesday of each month. And in both of them, it states that one regular meeting should be held annually at each college. And so it looks like that might even want to be revised, probably.
Or followed. So the next item is item nine. Oh, no, that, item 13. On our action calendar, which is consider approval of a one-year contract in the amount of $210,000 with the College and Career Academy Support Network for the provision of technical assistance to the East Bay Career Pathways Consortium for which the Peralta Community College District is the fiscal agent. And 14, 13, trustee Handy has suggested that we handle 13 and 14 together. 14 is consider approval of one-year contract in the amount of $330,000 with the Career Ladders Project for the provision of technical assistance to the East Bay Career Pathways Consortium for which the Peralta Community College District is the fiscal agent. Is there any comment on this item? Trustee Handy?
The reason I pulled these two items, and actually, there were three items I asked to be pulled last week when I couldn't be there. It's very, it's very clear. There, our community, agencies in our community want to be involved in this. They are very, very happy that we have this pathways grant. They really want to be involved in it. But what I am getting is complaints from the community that they are not being involved in doing the foundation work. And I think it's the same as not including your end users when you do an analysis of technology. These are the people, the people that we're serving are people that are usually marginalized, who have not been taken into consideration and therefore now need the extra attention. So to not include the agencies, especially agencies representing communities of color, in the initial foundation planning. And these agencies are not saying that they want to be identified as a contractor. They're saying that they want to be identified in the initial planning processes to make sure that they are inclusive. I have sent email after email. I have reviewed emails that have been sent from community agencies, and yet they still were not included into these first three. Now, I understand after having a conversation with the chancellor that these are initial foundation pieces and that contracting opportunities will come out later. But I was corrected again in email today by one of the community organizations as saying they're not looking to be contracted, to be contractors. They are looking at being, and at being involved in, in fact, basically, lack in reach. The involvement or lack thereof of communities of color in the foundation work, which would add richness and insight to the district's worst versus the prevailing view that, you know, this can be done later, they can be included later. So I think it's just really important. We've had community organizations coming here for the past four or five months. And we are really trying to have a better relationship with them. And so when they say, we want to help you, to help our communities, I believe that we should really listen to them. So I would like to not get these phone calls. I would like to make sure, whatever we have to do, that communities, including the faith-based organizations or whatever, are included in the planning process. Thank you.
Trustee Riley.
Yeah, president, thank you. So I guess this is direct to the chancellor, to the chair, if I may. So what is the composition of this planning committee? Are you?
Well, the planning, keep in mind, this Career Pathway Trust is a program, a regional collaboration and partnership with the K-12 system and the community college system. So the planning groups are representative from 11 school districts, three community college districts. Those, that's the planning group. And we have included, we will include some community-based organizations. These, these items that are on the agenda today are specific to organizing the K-12s and the community colleges. There will be subsequent planning that I think, as I shared with trustee Handy, that will bring in community-based organizations, not only from our community, but we are, this is a regional collaborative. So we're getting folks from as far as south, I guess, as Hayward up to Richmond. And we are in the process of identifying those community members to be involved. I just had a recent conversation and meeting with one of our faith-based leaders. I assured her that we need their participation in reaching out to the community and letting our, particularly young people, understand that this project is for them and that we're here to serve them, and that we need the community-based organizations to be our conduit and our liaisons with the schools. So I'm clear about that as well. These contracts that you see here are the beginning so that we can get off the dime.
Thank you, chancellor. Just quickly, so the timeframe to start the, these community involvement, the, is there, is it January, is it this year? Or what do we, what do we look at for the CBOs?
So I don't have that necessarily. I know Karen Engel is here. I know we are calling a meeting of the CBOs. Karen, you want, I don't know what the date for that is. Maybe Michael, you do. Is Michael Otten still here? Okay, Karen is here.
Good evening, trustees, college presidents, chancellor, and district staff. Karen Engel, interim director of economic and workforce development. So we have also been in communication with many of these community-based organizations. And we are looking at convening and would like to perhaps open the conversation about exactly who to convene. In early November was the timeframe that was being discussed. And those convenings could be scheduled, you know, in an ongoing manner. The confusion was a little bit in terms of the, the work group that was comprised primarily of just the K-12 district staff and the college staff in applying for and conceptualizing the work. But now that the funding has arrived and we're beginning to dig in, now it seems like the time that we could open the doors and have a broader conversation. So the thought was to start in early November.
I have a question. What is the interaction that we have in community and workforce development with our community partners? What is our standard protocol regarding the interaction? Do we engage them on a regular basis? Do we have partners that we work with? Or is this a new thing?
I don't know that I can answer that question, having lived here for a short while.
I think, a couple of ways to answer that question. Number one, with our community partners, particularly with business and industry, all of our CTE programs have advisory boards who reach out to the community, particularly in industry. But keep in mind, this CPT grant is really new for us and is uncharted territory. So we're moving along and identifying, you know, procedures or the protocol on how to engage our partners. We haven't done this before. And that's what's so innovative about this. You know, this is new to us as well. And we're trying to do the best we can to, to be inclusive. But then on the other hand, this is about career pathways in the K-12 systems and post-secondary education. So we have to rely on their expertise to make this happen.
What I'm asking, the question is that the White House has initiated a new program, which is specifically directed to partnering with community organizations and educational institutions. It's like Brothers Keepers, but it's a community initiative. So what I see as the sort of outcome of the discussion we're having now is institutionalizing our community partners because it's being called on from not just the national level, but what we continually hear in our conferences with the state chancellor's office is that we need to have more outreach so that we have diversity of faculty, so that we have diversity, so that we reach the students that are Title III students. We have been hearing that continuously. And it's time that we institutionalize our community partners so that we don't have to think about who we're going to call because they want to help us. And in fact, as, as the educators, we have a team of experts in the community that know who we need to reach, where we can find them. And we also need their help for things like housing and for, to, how are we going to institutionalize that $80,000 worth of counselors? Our need is great because we're, as you know, as the administrators that are operating this district, you're charged with doing much more than you have the resources and the manpower to do. And this is the time that we institutionalize our partners. So I would ask that when we are convening in November, it not be for this particular pathways grant, but that we understand that you're not alone, that we understand that you have a huge responsibility, a huge amount of work to do, and that we have the community partners. And we simply are not going to be able to have the most effective performance if we don't partner with those, those community organizations. And we actually need to do that because the funding that we're getting is not going to cover housing, for instance. And it's not going to cover some of the things that we need to make sure that our students, who are often the least able to afford the education, can actually get the support they need even to be able to, to maintain their enrollment in our, in our classes. So with our best intentions, we still need the help. And it's time that we institutionalize that help.
We had trustee Oliver and trustee Handy.
Just a quick statement that helps to put it into perspective. We have systems of inequity that institutional decision-making have created. And these grants and things that we have are to fix these, these systems. But if you look at, if you say to me, okay, I'm working with the K-12 system. If we look in this room right here, you will see the trustees, we have to live in the six-city district. We represent each district. So we're going to be representative of this community. But when you go around the table here, you will find that most people in this room do not live in the six-city district that is represented by Peralta. That will be the same thing when it comes to the Oakland Unified School District. So when you're talking about working with the school district members, I'm saying be more specific, working with school district members who live and understand the dynamics of the communities that we're trying to serve. Because just because they work for OUSD doesn't mean that they don't live in San Mateo, San Rafael, or whatever. So that's where our community is coming from. Whereas you think, oh, I'm doing a good job because I'm talking to them specifically. But if you dig a little bit deeper and ask where all those people are coming from, then it leads us to the problems that we have already, this, this constant system that doesn't serve because the people that we wish to serve are not at the table when the decisions are being made about how they can best be served. So that's where I'm coming from in this. Thank you.
Trustee Oliver.
So, I mean, the item is to provide professional development support, assistant, technical assistance, professional development support for the members for the first years, I guess, to get it started. I mean, are you guys asking for different, a different organization to, to do this type of work? Or, or what is?
I'm asking on behalf of community members that are asking me that we make a very strong effort to be inclusive of the community member, of the people that we're trying to serve, that we make sure that the people who are making any decisions are representative of the people that we're trying to serve. And I'm not saying that they're asking to be hired or contracted. I'm saying that there are people who are advocates for education who live in the city of Oakland. There are people who are advocates for all of the things that we're trying to accomplish. We just want to make sure that the people that we are serving are represent, that they're, that the people who represent them have a place at the table in all levels of decision-making or discussions.
I just ask that because I see that 10% of the $15 million was set aside for technical assistance, professional services, which is about 1.5 billion. And this item and the next is asking about 30% of that, 33%. I mean, it would seem appropriate to, you know, to, to receive this type of support to get this going immediately. Yeah, just think it would be appropriate. Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
So do we have a motion with respect to items 13 and 14?
So do we have a motion with respect to items 13 and 14?
I'm not sure, what, what is, yeah. First of all, I agree with what you're saying, that there's no question, but that the community has to be directly involved and part of, early on in the decision-making process, and that all the members are helping in, are working to make those decisions rather than just a few. So my, I, maybe you can clarify something for, as a fiscal agent, and we're the fiscal agent here, what powers does that give us to act on behalf of the other group independently of feedback from the rest of the group? Can we, in other words, this decision for the $300,000, is that a Peralta decision, since we're the fiscal agent? Or is this an agreement, let's say, from the whoever principals of the three, we have three community college districts here with some distance between us, and I'm sure that they, you know, would be interested in serving their communities as well. So what I'm wondering is, this initial decision, is that a single decision by us as the, you know, the fiscal agent? Or is that decision to spend $300,000 for this particular service?
That decision was built into the grant, so it was, it was a collaborative decision.
I see, that's all I was getting at, when it was a collaborative decision as opposed to a single...
And you're absolutely right, you know, there's, we are the fiscal agent, but we are not, we do not dictate to our partners how they are supposed to carry out these functions. So while I understand trustee Handy's concern and trustee Brown, we want to be inclusive with those populations that we have jurisdiction, there are others that we can't.
As I understand the conversation, it was a discussion about the conscience of Peralta and how we operate with our community partners, but there was not a suggestion that this item not go forward, but that it required discussion to make sure that we were fulfilling our responsibility to try and bridge the gap that, for the students and the communities that are most in need of outreach, and also to fulfill those accountability and governance requirements that we keep getting from the federal government and the state of California to make sure that we increase community involvement and increase diversity in how we do business. So as I understand, this was a discussion about the conscience of Peralta.
I'll move that item.
So my question was, do we have a motion with respect to items 13 and 14? And trustee Riley...
I'll move 13 and 14.
Has made a motion to approve 13 and 14, and trustee Galasa has second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
So that concludes our action calendar. So we, do we have any announcements?
We have a few announcements. For the chair, the next regular board meeting will be held on the 21st of October in the district office boardroom. The board is planning a board retreat for the 21st of October that will run between 5:15 and 7:00 PM. A second retreat is yet to be, there will be a second retreat, but details on the date and the location will follow. The board congratulates the Public Information Department, who was recently awarded two gold medallion awards by the National Council for Marketing and Public Relations. Congratulations, chancellor. And then, go Giants, and I think some of us already know that the Giants beat the Washington Nationals about 30 minutes ago, three to two.
How did you come by that information?
They, they won three to two, and they're now going to the National League Championship Series.
I thought you were talking about the New York Giants.
Yeah, no, I don't think so.
Trustee, I think there's a jurisdiction issue of that conversation. Only ages are allowed in that conversation.
Well, at the age, we don't want to talk about the age.
Okay.
Meeting is adjourned.